All right.
Take a residence in Hatfield.
All right. Are we ready, John? All right. All right, it is 6:07 on November 10th, 2022. A call to meeting to order, planning board meeting. We're here at Town Hall. My name is Stephanie Slush. I'm the chair of the planning board. To my right, I have Jimmy Tarr, our alternate chair. To my left, I have our newest board member, first meeting, John Duffrest. Right, correct, yes. Great. And then at the end here, I have Lee Bell. And then joining us virtually, I have Mike Pashak. Mike, say hello. Hello. Great. The first item on the agenda as always is public forum. This is an opportunity for people to speak to something that is not on the agenda. But I believe our two audience members are on the agenda. Is that correct? All right. And there's no one else here joining us virtually. So I'll leave it. Any, oops, see unless this person coming in is for public forum with you. Okay, great. If there isn't anyone for public forum, we can close public forum and move on to the first discussion item, which is an informal discussion item about a possible zone change on Sixth Church Street. So if you were a part of our last meeting, we had someone come and talk at public forum for it. We said we couldn't have a conversation unless it was on the agenda. So now it's on the agenda. So if you don't mind coming and sitting in front of the microphone and just stating your name and your address, and we can start this conversation here.
All right. Hi, I'm Mandy Black. I am actually here on behalf of my husband, Andy Black. And we currently live in Hadley, but we own property at Sixth Church Ave. in West Hatfield. What else do you need?
Yeah. So you're requesting, it's currently zoned rural residential?
Yes.
And you're looking at requesting a zone change to
Business.
Business, which is what the surrounding area is.
Everything except for two properties on that street. And we've talked to the owner of the other property, and she's totally on board with whatever she needs to do to sort of back us up on this.
Okay. Yeah, there's a little feedback there, sorry. We, yes, so we spoke, he, this was relayed to us last week from your husband, Andy. And the way, just for the process of this works is it's up to the planning board to decide whether or not that's something we would want to advance to town meeting. I would say precedent of how we've handled this in the recent past and in the past in general is to allow for these things to go ahead to town meeting, their zone changes. However, it is the, I don't know, unless other, you know, we're a different board now than we were two, a couple of years ago when this came up. But I feel like, you know, given the precedent, that's what would happen. Though only for the discussion that we would need to have amongst us as a board is whether we would vote to recommend this zone change, to not recommend this zone change, or stay neutral on this, on this zone change. And I feel like that conversation needs to happen in a formal discussion setting when we have maybe like a map submitted from you all that would be helpful for us to reference and the public to reference in a formal discussion. And then also for, sorry.
It's okay. I was just pointing to the fact that Mike is actually here.
Mike, yes. Hi, Mike, we can see you. And so we can talk a little bit about it if we want to. But has anyone seen the, a map and knoweth about the property that we're talking about? Do we have any questions or anything that we?
I went by there. So it's, I believe it was a tobacco barn originally.
Yeah.
And it's been converted. It's really, it's a really nice, really nice looking piece. It's completely innocuous. It's kind of set down behind the house. Got a nice drive down to it. I spoke to your husband the last time he was here. He said he's done a lot of improvements inside to make it better for the business that he had, that he decided, he decided to work for someone else. So he has this, this piece of property. Yeah, it's a really nice piece of property. And it is surrounded by business as we, as we all.
Yeah, even, even the other residential houses on the street, across the street, are his own business. It's for some reason, these two.
I'm sure, as we've seen with oddities of our zoning map in this town, is I'm sure there are owners that were in that, on those two houses that were not zoned business, were very adamant during whatever we did this zone change, that they wanted it to remain a residential street or whatever. And so an exception I'm sure was made for those two people. And so now we run into this where we have this and also like running a business off out of property that is owned rural residential, and you're having now issues with, with that, so.
So what is the business?
It was a plumbing business. But he's recently wanted to sort of rent it out. He's started to work for another company. So he wants to rent it out. And the issue is now that it's not his own business, so people aren't able to put their businesses.
So there's a question as to like, should there have been a business to even run out there at the beginning? Because it was never zoned properly to have a business. That is not our decision to be making.
Well, improving your property for yourself isn't really.
It's, it's implicated, like the making that decision is, is more on the zoning piece. And I'll just say again, like, said that to me, going to town meeting and letting the townspeople decide on something like this is, I mean, that's the point of the zoning change. And based on the, I know it's different than the zoning change that was on the town meeting warrant a couple of years ago. But I would feel we were neutral on that last time. And I would, I personally would want to remain neutral again going forward on this because I feel like it should be done more holistically, even though this is a very odd zone.
Absolutely.
And just because anyone comes to us and wants to change and request a zone change for their property, that it should be done more holistically, I think, from a board's perspective. And it will be done with a, with a master plan, which is, we're starting that process next month, which is exciting. So, but that's not going to help you in the short term. That's like a two or three year plan. But yeah, Mike, do you have anything to say? Oh, hold on. Hold on, Mike, we can't hear you. One second, Mike Gerard, are you? All right, sorry. What were you going to say, Mike? We can't hear you.
I can't hear.
I think you just hung up. Mike, I'm gonna call you right back right now. Mike, I'm calling you. You want to pick up?
It's happening.
Hello. Okay, go ahead. What were you going to say? You turned up a little, Gerard, if you can.
I think we remain neutral on this item and go to town meeting if let them decide.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, and again, I don't think we're going to make a vote tonight because I think we should, if there could be a little bit more of a presentation, like a, you know, a picture of that and like, that you're requesting both parcels and not just one parcel. I think the suggestion coming from the, from you instead of from us is, is the way we'd want to go with that as well. Are there any questions that anyone has for the applicant that they would want information on ahead of next meeting that would be relevant for making the decision?
If you bring a picture in, a drawing or whatever, please annotate the other businesses that are around it and around, around what we're talking about and who they are. So we can get an idea of what's going on with the other businesses on that street. And personally, I don't have a problem with it, but it's a, you know, that's just my own personal opinion. But a good picture, a good idea of a design of what you're talking about would be helpful for us to understand a little better. I have not had the chance to drive down the street yet, but I will.
Yeah, and then like, yeah, it's just like our zoning map online, a screenshot of like the properties with the neighboring properties showing the zoning in a submission for that. And then we can be on the formal part of the agenda at the next meeting and make it official to go towards the town meeting with whatever we decide, recommend it. Say no to it or not.
So you're saying we need to come to one more meeting?
Yeah, you can join, try and join virtually. Hopefully there won't be issues if that's an issue for you.
It's not a big deal. I just want to make sure we're here.
Yep, and which will be December 7th at 6:00.
I would just be interested in, you said that the neighboring property was also interested in this. I mean, it seems to me that if you're going to go to the town, that it would make sense to go, to go together. I mean.
Right.
Or a letter of support.
And get a letter that they know what.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, she's basically like, you know, oh, yeah, I've wanted to do it too, but just never really got it going.
That's a good point. Yeah, if you could get either her to come to the meeting or write a letter acknowledging her support and understanding of.
I mean, my personal thought is that it makes a lot of sense, especially given all of the infrastructure that we've done on five and 10 to support business.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm leaning towards recommending it.
Me too.
Personally.
Yeah, I just want to see the precedent that we sent, set and trying to treat people equally and fairly.
I understand, but I think that this one really does stand alone. I mean, it's, it's backed up the tracks in 91. It's surrounded by businesses. And if there are no butter concerns, I, you know, I see, I have, I've kind of racked my brain looking for where the, where the concerns would be. And I mean, I think the only concerns you would see was someone who would say, well, this didn't happen for me, so I'm going to complain about it. So that's where I am on it.
Right. But I personally also think this is wholly different than the O'Masta situation out on North Hatfield Road. Just totally different. We had so much opposition out there from neighbors that it really led us to not have an endorsement of the project one way or the other. We were neutral, and I think that carried a lot of weight, being neutral. As much weight as being against it. I think people look, if you guys aren't, aren't for it, then why should we be for it? So I, I think this is a different, a totally different situation. I agree with Lee. We're, you know, we're dealing with a small area here that's pretty protected, you know?
And that part of the road was all rural residential.
Right.
And as opposed to highway.
Right, it's insular in the way that it's surrounded by businesses.
Yeah.
It's like, it is spot, I mean, you could argue that it's spot sewn with keeping those two parcels rural residential.
And it probably had something to do with the church back in the day, I would imagine. I don't know.
Okay. Is that, hopefully that's
Yeah.
helpful for next meeting. And yeah, I think it's just making sure we talk about it formally and have just something to have for
Visual.
visual and then one more opportunity for public to come and weigh in at that, seeing it on the agenda. And yeah, with that request too, whether it would be Sixth Church Ave. and the other address to making sure.
And at least maybe something written from the butter
Yes.
as well.
If she's not there.
Did she already ask for that?
Yeah. Cool.
Okay.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you. You don't have to hang out unless you want to. All right.
Down, just right down the road too. Yeah, so next, we're moving on to our formal discussion, which is our continued hearing on the amendment for special permit for 164 West Street Storage Facility, SV Properties LLC. We opened the hearing last meeting, and we are continuing the hearing today with a quorum.
We appreciate that. Chris Chamberlain from Berkshire Design Group, civil engineer for the project. And this is Doug Lee from the owner, Storage Ventures. This is a site that we brought to you back in September of 2021, so not that long ago, when ownership was changing hands for the primary purpose of making sure that the permitting of this site was very clear, as well as the addition of some units. So this property, which is on West Street with 91 to the rear, is in the front full tilt auto.
Yeah.
And in the rear of the property is a storage facility, and it has been a storage facility under a few owners for a while, and also has a history of many other sort of high intensity uses going back a long, long time. And so when we came last year, again, there was, wanted clarity over the special permit for the use generally. And then there was a request to expand, to add a number of these modular units, which are storage units that essentially come off a truck, get dropped in place, and then they're ready to rent. So it's a nice way without having to construct new buildings to add storage units to a facility. And as Doug and a couple of the other clients that I'm working with can tell you, there seems to be no shortage of demand for more, more storage units. And as also as part of that special permit, just to remember back to last year, there was a request to allow vehicle storage on this property, which would be a non-conforming use. But given that this property has had a history of a numbers of sort of vehicular based businesses, we were requesting it as the continuation of a previous non-conforming use, and the board allowed that. And so now, again, seeing the demand and looking around this big property, thinking, oh, we can add a few more units in there. The request today is simply add some more of those modular units. So what we've shown on the plan is where the units approved last year got dropped on these sort of dark lined squares. And then these rows here with the dashed lines on them are additional units, as well as a few others, which would be against this building, which would not preclude any access to the existing building. And we would retain the vehicle storage areas, but not expand them. So actually, the net result of all of this is a little bit less room for vehicles to be stored on site. All of the new units would be on top of either pavement or compacted gravel. So there's really no construction at all per se. It's just making a little bit more use of the sites that's there. As part of the work that already happened under last year's special permit, there is a fence running right along this location here with screening on it. So none of this area can be seen from the street to begin with. And the new units would be behind an existing row of units. And the neighbors include a pond, I-91, the back end of the RV place, and the parking lot for the FedEx building. And I don't know if Doug, you have anything else to add, but that's that's the physical improvements that we're requesting an amendment to the existing permit for.
Any questions?
How many units are you talking, adding?
So this is an additional 36, and there are over 400 units, including the interior ones on site today.
Last year's, last year's expansion was 36 units also. Same size.
I have a question. I see this 100-foot wetland buffer and how these units are going to be in that. Is that correct?
So actually, the proposed units are just outside of it. But similar to last year, there is no ground disturbance. There is no construction. There is nothing to, to trigger wetland permitting. It's simply setting these boxes outside. There was conversation last time about the stormwater. And, you know, we noted this in the letter, but the surface here is essentially impervious anyway. When it's the compacted gravel, the runoff rate is 96%. Asphalt is 98%. So when we're putting units on top of there, there is no change in runoff patterns. If anything, it's a little cleaner because it's not picking up the dirt as it runs off the roof, but.
How many other questions?
They're not on peers, they just go right on the gravel.
Yeah.
And this is, you know, not expecting to, I mean, doubling what you requested last time, thinking about traffic concerns or anything like that? Any extra?
Yeah, so we put the traffic numbers in there, just mostly as a formality. The traffic generated by these sites are extremely low. I think we added one trip in the peak hour, and that was a factor rounding, actually, more than anything else.
And there won't be any additional lighting or anything put up with, with them here, or will?
No. Not that I'm aware of. Check with the owner before I say that.
Yeah, because I didn't see that mentioned in the design at all. So I just figured I'd ask that piece too.
I, I go into, I go into full tilt every morning, kind of open it up and, and clean up a little bit in the mornings. And where those are going, no one is ever going to know they're there.
Never, you never see.
It's completely innocuous.
Anything, Mike, from you?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Very good with it.
I think you guys have done a pretty thorough job and have been good neighbors in town. And personally, I see no reason why this should not go forward. That's my opinion. Like I said, I think especially you have come so many times to us
I know.
with thorough information. And we really appreciate it when you come really well prepared. And, you know, so we don't have to say, geez, come back with seven more things. I mean, you, you know, last time we just didn't have a quorum.
Right.
So.
I live in constant fear that you're going to ask me a question I don't know.
We haven't gotten one yet.
I love you so much.
Yeah. I have one more question too. Is there any additional screening that is being proposed, or is the current screening sufficient?
No, yeah, on this side, there's already an existing hedge. This fence includes sheeting, I guess it is, to obscure. And there's woods, woods, actually, two lines of trees with far 91. So there's really, there's nowhere to add screening.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering if that was.
I'll make a motion, we grant the special permit for.
The permit amendment.
Permit amendment, excuse me. I, we make a motion, we, we accept the amendment to the SBA for 144 West Street Storage Facility, SV Properties LLC. Might as well do it properly.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Can I just make sure, just to make sure this gets all recorded properly? So the application was originally submitted with a different plan that had fewer units on. So I would just want to make sure that, that this plan, which was revised 10/31/22, is referred to.
The plan from 10/25, you said?
Revised, I've got.
Revision one, 10/31.
Yeah, 10/31.
It's the one we're looking at. So I think that should be. The amendment? I don't.
Yeah, I just, if there's anything in the approval that's specific to a plan or to a number of units or anything like that, we just want to make sure that we don't end up with conflicting information down the road.
Okay.
Because the original application was for 16 units.
Okay. So Jimmy, do you want to?
I'll resubmit my proposal. Yeah, my motion is to accept the amendment to SBA for 164 West Street Storage Facility, SV Properties LLC on the revised plan from 10/5/22.
10/31.
10/31/22.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yeah, can we hear your mic say aye?
He's up.
Or nay?
He's up. It's good fun.
I know, but we need to hear it.
Oh.
Aye.
All right. Aye, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All right, the last item on the agenda. So each year around this time, I'm requested, the chair is requested to submit the requested budget for the finance committee. Generally by the end of the year. So I wanted to bring forth and just kind of talk over, I have, there's a copy in our packets from Gerard of what our budget was last year, of what was approved last year. And what in the, what has been done in the past is we just level request the same every year, except the last three years, we've requested extra money to pay for, to have a professional planner on staff. Very, very part-time, like five-ish weeks a month, like 20 weeks a month, or 20 hours a month, five-ish hours a week. And that was granted this past year. So that's really been the only difference probably in the sense I've been on the board for like three or four years. No, more than that since 2019. It's a long time now. Five years. There's, the, I just wanted to bring to your attention to have you take a look at what, what we normally request. We always underspend and never hit our budget. But we do have line items in there that I'm inclined to request the same for next year. I'm going to request the same money for our part-time planner. I've been working with Marlene to craft a job description. We were hoping to get the position description out in September, but she's been underwater with some other priorities. So hopefully, we could get that person hired and funded and.
Right, so this looks like our biggest, biggest line item, actually.
Biggest line item is, yes, the
Professional services.
The other professional services. Yep. And that was granted. So I just, if there are any discussion, any thoughts, any thoughts on wanting, thinking that there's things that we might need or want? Are we just good with me going ahead?
Well, being that we haven't spent our money, let's ask for the same amount of money. And if we need extra, we should have some left over, yes?
Yeah, so that's the, they take it back whenever we don't spend, I don't think.
They take it back when we don't spend, okay.
So like, for example, we have money for conferences and travel to those conferences, but we haven't had conferences the last three years. We didn't want to remove that line item and trying to fight to get it back, kind of thing. So that's kind of why we've kept it.
Well, it's also one of those things that if you don't ask for it and it disappears, then the next time it shows up, it's an irregularity as well.
Right. So the, really, the other big expense is the legal notices when we have our own legal notices we have to pay for. And then there, we get a small stipend for doing this work that we get once a year is really the money.
So this does not reflect that.
Okay, but this is what we requested, got requested and approved last year prior to the COLA. Okay. Yeah, it's basically our money for ourselves, small stipend, advertising, legal notice that we have to pay for. Professional development conferences, if we wanted to do those, part-time planner. And this, it was $1,700, and that was like if we needed to get an outside contractor to come in and vet a plan, or like we wanted our own professional services outside of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Postage and mailing, 50 bucks. That's for when we have our own hearings that we have to pay for, and we have to notify butters. The admin office supplies would be for printing anything that we would need. And then the business travels for reimbursements for gas. If you, for example, the conference from the Citizen Planning Training Collaborative, which is in March, is in Worcester. That's something we have money for that we could reimburse us to go to if we wanted to go back. So with that, this is just more of an informal FYI. Like, in the past, we haven't really gone through any of this. It's just kind of like happened. So I just wanted to be able to have you see the process as we, as we request this. And then there's a meeting with the finance committee and usually myself, where we, they like ask you, like, why do you need that? You have to like argue and explain why you want the money or not and that kind of thing. So I'm hopeful that we will at least hire someone before this, that meeting so that we can show that we're using that money. So I'll have to get with Marlene more on that. But she's excited and on board with that, with that role, so. Any discussion on that?
I think we should just go with what we asked for before.
Yep, that's what, yeah, great. Yeah, Mike.
I didn't, I wasn't, it wasn't clear. Stipends are getting a COLA or did not?
Yeah, they are apparently, Gerard said, yeah.
Okay.
You, you did receive one.
Or we did receive one, yeah, this past year. All right. That is all that is on the agenda, the five minutes of Google. Is there any other inform, any other discussion or updates from anyone? Have we heard from the hotel, Gerard?
Since the last time, I know they're just doing that due diligence with, I think, the development fund you had suggested, so they're looking into that.
Yeah, they, the only thing that we've gotten was like a, maybe we're thinking about putting storage units also with the facility that, or the hotel that they would be proposing. So more storage units. And I also got a weird, not weird, our emails are on the Town Hall, Town website, and people randomly inquire things. And one, somebody inquired, they were trying, they were asking about demand for storage unit places. This, it's clearly some guy who works for some storage, big storage company. Was just like looking, asking our town if we've approved anything in the recent, last year or two. And if there's any projects on the horizon. I don't know, some company I would have to.
Devon.
I don't know. But they were just, so that was interesting because we are seeing some self-storage stuff pop up, so.
Do we know what's going on on Elm Street in the back lot there behind the old pickle place?
Yes, so that's the parcel, that's the house. Yes. So that's the parcel, that's the house.
Zagradnik?
The house that's next to Pine Edge Way.
Yeah.
That, you know, is that the one I'm talking about? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about in the back. Somebody's building something in the back there.
So yes, so that property, apparently it's been approved that they could build another house back there if they rip out the kitchen of the house in the front. So it's not two dwellings on one property. And that apparently was not our, like, that was what the building inspector said. This, because the guy originally wanted to tear down that giant historic, that historic house.
He's Zagradnik, I think.
So he, and he wanted to tear this, the house down, but then I think there was some issue. No, you can't. And then he's like, well, can I build a house behind it? But our zoning bylaws say no. So he's found a workaround to just tear, he's apparently very wealthy. He could just tear out the kitchen of that house in the front to then make it not a dwelling.
Isn't that Josie Zagradnik's son?
Which one?
The weird one.
He has two sons.
He came, he came here, he came here to ask us about this and.
No, that's not the parcel you're talking about. That the guy who came and talked to us and asked to put in rental units?
No, no, different one. He asked us about building a, a house back there. And he's, I can't remember. Michael, do you know his name?
No, I don't.
It was my understanding. It was a gentleman who had a house on like Kohl's Meadow Road and he was waiting for that house to sell. That was my understanding, but that's neither here nor there.
Don't know.
But that's what was approved and allowed.
Didn't remember it going through us. That's all. And being that it has very little frontage on the street, I'm just wondering about it.
Yep. It's something we will have to look at when we look at our redoing our bylaws. If that's something we would want to continue to allow or not. But yes. Anything else? Otherwise we can look at the minutes.
Just the attendees.
Remember his name.
Attendees, John Jeffers, thing right off the top.
Oh, spelled incorrectly?
That was before you guys got to know me because by the end of the doc.
See, it was perfect after that.
You had me five, four or five times after that.
And then I, the only other thing I see is it says, see attached for town attorney response, but that isn't attached here. Oh, it is, is it? Okay.
Need to attach that? I just put it in there.
Yeah. I think you should. Cause I think I read it. Yep. But other than that, I think it looks good. Any motion?
I make a motion. We accept the minutes with the revisions that suggested.
With the minutes of October 5th, 2022. Any second?
October 2nd.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right. Yeah. And Mike, cause he wasn't there, can't vote on that. All right. Our next scheduled meeting is December 7th. And that adjourns our, I think, closes our meeting. Would motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Anyone? Ooh, here we go. Getting to the minutes there, John. All right. Mo, meeting is adjourned at 6:41. Hey, Mike. Hope you're doing all right.